At this point, we're going to call the meeting to order. If I could ask those of you that are standing up back, we can't have the aisles blocked. There are seats around. It won't matter at this point because we're short of seats if you have to squeeze in where some of the retirees are sitting or whatever, or if you can stand along the back and the side just so that we don't run into any problems with complaints. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, which is a republic of the 16th century, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
That's the guy over there in front of the corner.
Who was it?
That's the guy.
Oh, yeah?
Good evening. I'd like to start off tonight thanking everybody that came. It's nice to see so many old friends. Not putting emphasis on the word "old." It's just nice to see you. We'll start off with introductions so that everybody knows who's who, and we'll start at the fire in the table with Julie. If you'd just introduce yourself.
Julie Serprenat, the Business Manager.
Vinnie Cludier.
Heather Massier.
Josh Kotay.
Kevin Hayes.
And I'm Dr. Ted Malvey, the interim school superintendent.
Chris King.
Kurt Nodquist.
And if our school council and insurance consultants would introduce themselves as well.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Rozak with the law firm of Myrick O'Connell.
Good evening. My name is Kevin O'Keefe from Axial Benefits Group.
And my name is Mick Rogers from Axial as well.
Thank you. At this point, we will call the hearing to order. Proper notice was given that there would be a public hearing on today's date at this time and place at Wyre Village, and all retired participants in our insurance program have been duly notified. Before we begin, I would just like to take the opportunity to clear up any misinformation or misunderstandings that may have resulted from the notice that was sent out, far from any rumors or statements that you may have heard from people in and about. First and foremost, the district has no intention of eliminating anybody's health insurance, nor do we have any intention of reducing anybody's coverage, or to make changes in your coverage or benefits. This hearing is the first step in a multi-step process that will allow us to place current retirees who are in the GIC plan into our own district plan, where we will have better control over plan designs and costs. At this date and time, GIC has control over both of those issues. Currently, we have approximately 70 non-teacher retirees who are in the district plan. The larger this group becomes, the more we can drive costs down and pass that savings on to the district for the education of the children. At the same time, we'll bring equity across the board to all our retirees, both teachers and non-teachers. Given the financial crisis of the community, coupled with the rising cost of operating the district, we are constantly being asked from year to year to do more with less. At this point, there's no light at the end of the tunnel. We foresee no increases in school revenue that will allow us to continue on this current path. In fact, it's going the other way, and grant revenue and other revenue we have from the state and from the federal governments continue to decline. Unless we move now and do something in the way of cost containment measures, we may very well reach the point where we have to ask you folks to come back here in a year or two, and then we will be facing that dreaded decision as to whether benefits can continue or not. None of us want that to happen, and that's why we're taking the action that we're taking now. So I ask you tonight to put all your emotions aside, all of us, and to listen with an open mind to the presentations that will be made to you by insurance consultants. At the conclusion of their presentations, I will open the hearing to questions from retirees. After all retirees have an opportunity to ask their questions, I will then open it up to the general public for anyone else that wishes to make a comment or to have a question. I will give all opportunity to retirees to ask any questions that they have. I'll ask you to please try not to be redundant. If the question you want to ask has already been answered, please pass and wait for another opportunity if you have another question. And I would ask for those people that aren't retirees that you not try to have input into the meeting until I call for the end of the retirees' input, and then I'll open it up to the rest of yous. Having said that, at this point, I would like to introduce insurance consultants to provide you with a presentation. We're going to move out of here so that we won't be in the way, and you'll be able to see the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. As I mentioned, my name is Kevin O'Keefe. My company name is Axial Benefits Group. Here with me this evening is my partner Mick Rogers. As far as the agenda goes, you can see that we've just had the opening remarks, and as part of the overview, what I will be doing in this portion of the discussion, we'll be talking specifically about the plans that are currently being offered through the GIC to the retired teachers, that being the medical insurance, the dental insurance, and the life insurance. We will also discuss in this presentation the information as to the plans that will be made available through Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District. When we're talking specifically about the medical plans, we're going to look at it from two different directions, if you will. We are going to be looking at the Medicare plan options, so there is a group of retirees that have access to Medicare, both POTS A and B. They're on a Medicare supplement plan, so we'll be looking at those plans specifically. But what we'll also be doing is looking at the non-Medicare programs. There are a number of retired teachers who are early retirees that haven't reached age 65 as of yet and therefore not eligible for Medicare, or there could be some retirees who, in fact, are not eligible for Medicare even after the age of 65 because they have not paid into Social Security. So we'll be speaking directly on that. After this portion of the presentation, we'll, as the chairman has stated, we'll look to receive comments from the retirees. We'll also look for public comments, at which point, after that, the public hearing will be closed, and then we will ask for a non-binding vote from the retirees, a standing vote. Then after that, we'll have the school committee discussion. To lay out the timeline, this evening, we are holding our public hearing. We are going to ask that the retired teachers vote on the proposal to revoke Mass General Law's Chapter 32B, Section 11E, which is the vehicle where the retired teachers have their health plan options. If approved, the school committee is under some tight timelines as directed by the GIC, by the state. We must notify them no later than April 1st, so it's right upon us, and that would be for July 1 effective date for plans to be available. If approved, the retirees would be advised shortly of open enrollment, and during that process, you will be provided detailed plan information, cost information, how to go through the election process for the products that we'll discuss, and new ID cards will be mailed prior to the July 1 effective date. And on July 1, again, 2014, the new plans would be effective. So how will this impact you? That's everybody's big question, of course. As we look at the health insurance component here, we see that the GIC currently offers plan options whether you are a Medicare enrollee or a non-Medicare enrollee, as I just mentioned. In this scenario, the state, the GIC, controls the carrier options, who's going to be made available to you, the plan options, and the costs. The district has no control over this at all. The state does. The district, however, also offers plan options whether you are a Medicare enrollee or a non-Medicare enrollee as well, so we are not looking to take away options, as was just commented. Changing to the district plans will not change your requirement to enroll in Medicare when first eligible. So if you become eligible for Medicare upon reaching age 65, it is expected, it is required, that you enroll in Medicare. If you are not entitled to Medicare because you have not contributed to Social Security, we understand that's a valid reason, so there are options available there as well. There will continue to be options available there. We will also have plan options whether you live in Massachusetts or outside of Massachusetts. Everybody will have a plan option available to him or her. Now, we are going to look specifically at the Medicare enrollees, those people who are currently covered by the GIC that have both Medicare POT A and B. Currently, the GIC has an HMO plan, or currently, a couple of HMO plans. For our specific audience, we have the Fallon Senior Plan being made available, and we also have the Tufts Medicare Preferred. You live in the service area under these programs, and you go to designated providers, doctors. How many retirees currently are in this plan? Based on the GIC enrollment that they've provided to us, there are 20 retirees in one of these two programs, most in the Fallon Senior Plan. We also have indemnity products. Indemnity is a product which is really a freedom-of-choice type plan. You're not restricted to certain doctor access, if you will. This is where we have the bulk of the Medicare retirees. We have 88 folks in this program, and here we have the Unicare Medicare Extension Program. A retiree can live out of state under this program. Again, remember that this is for Medicare enrollees, those people who have access to Medicare POT A and B. So we have a combined total of 108 people in that program, in those programs, the vast majority covered through the indemnity program. So as a Medicare enrollee, for these individuals that we're talking about right now, what are your plan options through Spencer East Brookfield Regional School District? Well, two plan options will be made available to you. Both are offered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield. The first is MedX Bronze. This is a product already offered to some retirees, to the non-teachers, the retirees, as part of the district. The MedX Bronze Plan is that freedom-of-choice plan. It's a Medicare Supplement Plan that allows you to live in Massachusetts or outside of Massachusetts. This is a phenomenal program that Blue Cross and Blue Shield offers, and it's currently available today. Also available will be an HMO if an individual prefers to have an HMO. So we talked about you have the Fallon Senior Plan made available to you today through the GIC, a couple of people who are on the Fallon Senior Plan. If they want to maintain an HMO, the HMO Blue for Seniors Plan is available here. This is the statewide HMO. It's been well-publicized that certain doctor groups have backed out of the Fallon Senior Plan. That has caused disruption for some people probably in our audience. The HMO Blue for Seniors Program is a statewide HMO. That doctor group that has been taken out of the Fallon Senior Plan is part of this program. So if you are impacted and perhaps lost your doctor, great news. The senior program will have those doctors back. All of the doctors are in the MedX Bronze Plan as well, so great news there. So those are the Medicare options that we just talked about. We have freedom-of-choice indemnity plans available to you, can live inside or outside of Massachusetts. We have an HMO Blue for Seniors Program. If you are a Massachusetts residence, you can have access to the HMO Blue for Seniors product if you choose that platform. Now, speaking specifically regarding non-Medicare enrollees, the individuals who are early retirees, perhaps, not age 65 yet, or perhaps age 65 or after, or who are not eligible for Social Security. Under this program here, the current GIC plans for the HMO, we have the Fallon Select or Direct Care Programs. Fallon is, of course, one of the very well-known insurance companies here in the area. You must live under these HMO programs. You must live in the service area, really, which is statewide, and you must use the network providers. Under the HMO, we have 40 retirees in this program, some under the age of 65, some over the age of 65. In the GIC, there is also the Unicare Indemnity Plan, that freedom-of-choice plan. You don't have a service area requirement there. How many people are in this plan? 23. The vast majority are Massachusetts residents. Those are the plans offered to non-Medicare enrollees through the GIC. What about through Spencer East Brookfield? Well, there will be three plan options, if approved, that will be offered, and this is for all the non-Medicare enrollees or retirees. All are offered by Fallon. Notice we have the Fallon Select Care HMO. Fallon's largest statewide network, it is the most expansive network that Fallon has. There are over 33,000 doctors in this network. We also will have the Fallon Direct Care HMO, just like what was in the GIC in terms of doctors and so forth. There are over 20,000 doctors in this network. And I'll say this, as many people retired and chose the Fallon Select Care, we'll see that most people are in the Fallon Select Care. When a person retired, understandably, a lot of people chose the Select Care Network because the Direct Care Network at that time, years ago, really wasn't an expansive network. Today, the network has grown tremendously. There are now over 20,000 doctors there, so it's roughly 2/3 the size of the overall network. My point in saying that is that more options will become available to you because of the sheer network growth of the Direct Care HMO. Then, we have a Fallon PPO Program. So to keep our promise of making sure that there's a plan available to everybody, that we want to make sure that if you live outside of Massachusetts, you can't belong to the HMO, we will have a Fallon PPO made available to you, and that is a national network of doctors in hospitals. This slide here talks to where we just walked through the healthcare options. This slide here speaks to other programs that are currently offered through the GIC to the retired teachers, that being life insurance. Currently, a retired teacher will be able to receive a $15,000 life insurance benefit. Here, too, you see that a life insurance benefit will be made available in the same $15,000 benefit level, same benefit. Dental insurance. Currently, the GIC offers to retiree teachers an opportunity to enroll in a dental benefit if he or she wants that plan. It's a voluntary plan. The retiree pays the full cost. It's a great plan. Here, too, we see that Blue Cross and Blue Shield will offer a Dental Blue PPO Program available to you, and this program is fantastic. So another great program, another dental plan. So you can see from the comments earlier from the chairman, we are trying to provide you coverage for medical insurance with multiple options, whether you live in Massachusetts, outside of Massachusetts, whether you're a Medicare enrollee or not a Medicare-eligible enrollee, or whether you have life insurance or dental insurance, everything will be made So the big question everybody is wondering, what specifically is this going to cost? So here is an exhibit that has been put together to show you by product, and I'll walk through this so everybody is comfortable with this exhibit. This will compare what are the costs currently in the GIC. By the way, these represent costs effective July 1. Just only a couple of weeks ago, the GIC released its new premiums. To no surprise, there have been increases in the premiums. So the GIC has released these numbers. These would reflect your numbers. They are, of course, rounded to the whole dollar, but we'll also show you the costs for the comparable plans that we just walked through, and we'll talk specifically, this will show the medical insurance and certainly the life insurance, the voluntary insurance is on the dental portion. But nevertheless, as we look at this, it's important to note, these figures that are shown here show a retiree contribution of 25%, the same contribution that the rest of the district has towards the insurance. So with that, as we look here, on the left-hand side, first at the top, notice in the left-hand corner, it says insurance plan type. Right below that are the Medicare plans. So these are the costs. This top section of the exhibit represents the costs and the plans for those people who are currently enrolled in Medicare A and B and through a Medicare program with the GIC. So we see that we had Unicare Indemnity, the Indemnity Plan. Currently, we have three people who are very early retirees. They are currently at $32 on a monthly basis for that Unicare Plan. Moving to the right, looking at the MedX Plan, Blue Cross's Indemnity Plan, its flexible freedom-of-choice plan, the plan you can choose if you live in Massachusetts or outside of Massachusetts. A lot of people refer to this as the Cadillac of the retirement plans. When you look at this plan, you can see that it would cost $67 on a monthly basis. So yes, when we look at the overall change in the numbers, the percentage looks large, understandable. However, when you look at it on an annual basis, with all due respect, and looking at the numbers, it's a $420 annual number. Below that, we see that there are 85 people, 85 individuals, who are in the indemnity plan today that are retirees, who are retirees, that will be paying $49 a month, beginning July 1 with the GIC. That cost for the MedX Plan, because we want to compare to the richest plan, the MedX Plan, again, would be $67 on a monthly basis, or an annual difference of $216. Then we have 11 people covered by that Tufts Medicare Preferred Plan, again, using the richest plan design if they chose to join the MedX Plan with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, again, $67 for an annual cost increase of $324. And then we have nine individuals who are on the Fallon Senior Plan, that plan where I mentioned there was doctor disruption and so forth. Well, we also have the HMO Blue for Seniors Program, and if these Fallon Senior members wanted to go into the HMO Blue Plan, the statewide HMO, it's $65. But notice how close the flexibility is in terms of the MedX Plan, the freedom-of-choice Plan. It's a $2 difference, but still, you'll have the option of the HMO Plan. That difference there, $264 over an annual basis, if you go into the like plan. Below this, that's the Medicare portion, the top portion of the exhibit. The bottom portion of the exhibit are for those people who are non-Medicare eligible enrollees in the GIC. On the left-hand side, we see that we have the Fallon Select HMO. We have 16 families, the F in the second column is for families. We have 16 families in that program where the retiree is paying $221 on a monthly basis. Through Spencer East Brookfield, that cost at the 25% level is $394 for an annual difference of $2,000. Then we have one individual who has retired a while back, who is paying only $61. That person, excuse me, that individual will go from $61 to $151, or a difference of $1,080, or a monthly difference of about $49, $50. Then we have 19 individuals who are more recent retirees, paying 15%, and they are currently paying $92. That would go up to $151, and for an annual difference of $708. Below that, we have the Fallon Direct HMO, and we only have four people in this network. To my earlier comment, many people chose the Fallon Select Plan years ago because the Direct HMO network was not that large. It has grown tremendously, again, over 20,000 doctors in that network alone. My point in saying that is that if you look at the Fallon Direct HMO, families are $173 beginning July 1 through the GIC. That will go to $333, or a difference of $1,920. The Fallon Direct, with the one person who has retired, with the one individual there is paying $72, that will go to $128, difference of $56 a month, or $672 over the course of the year. If you are on the Select Care HMO, looking back up a category, you're one of those family members of the 16. You can see that your costs will be, through Spencer East Brookfield, approximately $394. However, if, in the process, the education process, you are able to look and see your doctors or hospitals are now part of the Direct Care Network, then you can go from that $394 down to the $333. So there is an opportunity to reduce that increase, if you will. And remember, too, that many of the people who are in the non-Medicare category, if you will, these are generally early retirees. The vast majority are early retirees. However, many are in their, you know, in the 63, 64 range. So what we're talking about here is not a change that will necessarily affect you going forward forever, if you will, because once you become Medicare-eligible, if you become Medicare-eligible at age 65, you're going from this column to the right of, let's say, you're an individual at 151, you drop down to the column up above under the MedX Plan, perhaps at $67. So it may be a short timeframe, but again, we wanted to be, we wanted to show the numbers kind of in an apples-to-apples comparison, going from Fallon Select HMO through the GIC, Fallon Select through Spencer East Brookfield. And then we have the Unicare Indemnity Product, Freedom-of-Choice Plan. That program there, and again, of the 23 people in the program, the vast majority, almost all, are Massachusetts residents. So you will have the opportunity to select the Fallon HMO, one of the Fallon HMOs. So you can see that that would, if you were to do that, that would certainly provide savings. If you are an early retiree and you decide to leave Massachusetts and, you know, go elsewhere, we'll also make available a Fallon PPO Plan, so that flexible national network. Then, as we look down below on that very last line, we see the life insurance plan. Currently, it's a $7 a month cost for you, for the retired teachers. That will change to $2, same benefit of $15,000, but it is a $2 cost, so there is $5 in savings there on a monthly basis. That's the end of the presentation on the plans of the GIC versus the plans on Spencer East Brookfield. With that...
Do you want to go back to the table?
Thank you, everybody.
I'm sure that that has generated a host of questions, and due to the number of people that are here, rather than having to get up and come to the mic to ask your question, if you want to raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and I'll repeat the question for you from here so everybody will be able to hear, and we'll direct the answer to the proper person that has the knowledge to answer that. And when he finishes, I'll go back to you, so if you have a follow-up question based upon the answer they give you. And we'll take the time and go through this process until we answer everybody's questions. So is there anyone that... So is there anyone that... Yes, ma'am, would you give me your name, please?
Yes, it's Kristy Miller.
Hi, Kristy.
I have several questions. First of all, to the chart that's up there, I don't know if my system is correct, Obamacare, Medicare, Unicare, the other one, the indemnity plan. And if there was $49 that I paid, that's not correct, I took $67 every month that I'm in Medicare. I don't know where you put your paper costs.
Kevin, could you...
Unicare programs, by the way, much of that exhibit was provided to us by the GIC. The Unicare program is a, is a unique program that the GIC offers, where they can actually subsidize premiums for certain individuals. So those numbers were provided by the GIC directly.
All right. Well, I just have to point out, something I wanted to know is, there is a special dividend fund that's set aside for retirees and insurance. This is as a pass general law, Chapter 32, B here, Section 8A, I think it is. Now, this law says that the GIC is supposed to put dividends, I don't know if anybody knows what it means, but they are supposed to put dividends into, directly into the school or the entity, the, the, the entity, the contract with it, or into a separate fund for retirees, it's probably separate from, you see, Floyd, the insurance trust fund. Now, do you folks know, I mean, I assume we've been under the GIC for quite a few years now, I don't know exactly, I don't know. What happens to that money to Spencer East Brookfield School?
Either Kevin or Kim, can either one of yous address that?
You are correct that there is a fund set aside for retirees, if in fact, and it only applies to the Unicare product, in fact.
Exactly. But what I'm asking is, what happened to it in this system?
In our example, our costs do not reflect that, so there would be no subsidy, if you will, because you'd be outside.
Right. I think this is better directed to the Honorable School Committee and the Chair, Dr. Melby. I want to know if how Spencer East Brookfield in the past has held this fund.
Dr. Melby, can you address that?
To my knowledge, we don't receive anything, and I could defer to Sue Torry. We don't receive any benefit from it in terms of receipts. And on an annual basis, all school districts, as well as municipalities, receive a statement, if you will, affectionately referred to as cherry sheet.
I would agree with that.
Okay. And from that, it lists any and all revenue at the time that the state would give out to a district, and we do not have that as any revenue that we receive.
Well, as a matter of fact, I know the answer to the question, because I called GIC yesterday, and I spoke to some of the schools that respect the GIC. And one person was able to tell me the answer. She was in the town hall, in the town apartment. She said, "Could the money be put back into rate credits?" Because everything is valid. So in other words, because I was wrapping my mind the other day, trying to think about how to ask new people where the money went in this district. But then I've since discovered, and it wasn't easy to discover this either, I've since discovered that this money is returned back into the fund in a form of rate credit. This is what stabilizes or lowers the rates in GIC. Another point I want to make is, there are almost half a million members in the GIC right now. Okay? This includes the entire community, and other municipal officials. The GIC right now has the best bargaining power or insurance rights of any other entity in the state of Massachusetts by sheer numbers. So I'm wondering, how can Mr. Bokeev, like Axel, how can he offer rates? I mean, what kind of bargaining power? Can you make, do you have, have the members that you bargained for?
Kevin, can you address that?
How do you come up with real rates?
To take a step back here, to reiterate what Dr. Melby had just said, you're right, the credit, the stabilization fund is for, is established by the GIC. The GIC, the state establishes the rate, and then from the money that is paid to the GIC, it's the GIC's discretion as to how much to credit back. The credit is given towards your monthly premiums. It is not a credit given back to the district. The district does not receive...
Correct.
Correct, yes. As far as the negotiation goes, I can't say that the state, to say that the state specifically has the best bargaining power, I would not say that. In fact, I would say that that's prob...
Excuse me, ma'am, we're going to ask a question, and then we're going to give an answer, and please don't interrupt him, or when he's done, I'll go back to you, okay?
The state is certainly a powerful organization when it comes to, when it comes to establishing rates and so forth. As consultants, as advisors, we have very good bargaining power as well. So to say that the state has great bargaining power, really, it's from the insurance company's perspective. See, the state has a number of carriers, a lot of different insurance companies it must satisfy. We here have been able to show you options with Fallon, with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Fallon and Blue Cross and Blue Shield would love you to become members of theirs, and I know that they will treat you extremely well. Fallon currently treats a lot of the retirees well. They want to continue working with you. So they will offer a competitive proposal to earn your business, to keep your business outside of the GIC, if that were to be the answer. So to, I understand your point, the GIC on, by sheer numbers, would seem like it is a very powerful bargaining group. It is, but it's not necessarily based on sheer number of, number of covered lives. Collectively, in our firm, we have far more members than, than what the GIC has under its control.
I was called to talk to some more people, and I guess, do you think a lot of Medicare is...
Unicare? Not in the private market, no, I'm not, you spoke to, and I apologize?
Right.
Okay. I apologize for that answer. Could be, I don't know, there are many companies, there's Unimout there, that's a, that's a like-sounding company, it's one of our clients, it's certainly one of our carriers. So as far as Unicare, Unicare really doesn't work in the private market. It really works in the GIC, the government market.
Thank you, Kevin. If you have any other questions, I'll come back to you, Chris, we'll give some of these.
I have some direct questions to Mr. Melby, and if he has one, I'll ask the question.
All right, if that's your last question, go ahead and ask him.
Dr. Melby, how is the budget going? I have a question, about 14 or 15, and I was discussing, of course, the, the retired publisher, and I noticed that you estimated 56, roughly $57,000 increase for FY15. Could you explain that, please, what that includes, is that blizzard...
Right, I'll answer, sure, sure. I'll answer the first part, and then defer to my colleague Julie, that actually crunches the numbers for us. But the way we prepared the budget was based on what our existing plans are, and this time of the year, we anticipate what increases may be. And we build that into the budget, and then as time goes on, and we get better information from the carriers, and certainly in the case of GIC, we're able to adjust that figure. But it's, it's ongoing, pretty much up through the summertime. But the exact numbers, I'll have to defer to our business manager Julie, and she can nail that down.
Well, the first thing, in my research, also, I found that the GIC has already set the rates for FY15.
The number in that budget...
Let me have Julie answer that second part.
I'm sorry, I was just talking.
The number in the budget is actually the assessment that GIC will assess us if we stay in. They set their actual assessments in January, and then they true it up over time, but in January, you get what your assessment will be. So that is, if we stay with the GIC, that's exactly what we'll have to pay for the GIC.
All right, thank you, Julie. Anyone else with a question? Yes, ma'am? What's your name, please?
Marian Alisal, Vice Mayor of Char, who's in ivory, but both covered by the indemnity plan. Thank you for the chart that you showed, it was very clear. However, one of the concerns is... Prophecy, drugs, you know, that, that's not part of that chart that you showed, and it makes a big difference. So could somebody address that?
Sure. Kevin, can you address that, please? Did you hear the question?
For those over 65 Medicare eligible, the Medex Plan offered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield has been called the richest in the industry. It is phenomenal. You're right, for the sake of information, and we have a lot of information here for you this evening, to start breaking it down by plan feature, and to go through that discussion would really take a long time. But the Medex Plan offered by Blue Cross and Blue Shield, again, is offered to non-teacher retirees currently. I think if you ask those individuals, they would say it's a very comprehensive plan, very, very low out-of-pocket costs when you see the doctor, nothing to the hospital, it's a very rich plan. The prescription drug plan, because it's governed by the federal government, that is a separate program, but that, too, is a rich plan. Should this go forth, then certainly you will be provided absolutely every piece of detailed information that you want on this.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jack LeGrand, former teacher, been out of the loop for a while. Can you tell me why Axel is here doing this presentation now? And did GIC, did a GIC representative get invited to come here tonight? And why weren't we given those cost sheets that were up there prior to this meeting? Those are things that we should have seen. How can we make a logical decision on this, while not at least having a chance to read down through those things and applying to ourselves individually? And why are we talking about 25%? Where did that number come from?
Thank you, Kevin.
So a couple of questions there. First, why, why am I here? We are the advisors to the district, we are the experts, if you will, in the insurance industry. We represent virtually all the insurance companies, not just here in Massachusetts, but throughout the country. So we know the market extremely well. We do the negotiation with the different carriers, we are able to leverage our expertise in the market for the benefit of those who, who want to work with us. Where the 25% number came from, that is a number that is the current contribution of the district teachers, so that will show at the same level. I'm sorry, the...
GIC?
The GIC, was a GIC representative invited here this evening? Not to my knowledge, no. This is a process outside of the GIC.
Anyone else? You didn't ask the figures, why didn't you get the figures earlier?
Oh, thank you, thank you. The figures at the 25% level, we just really wanted to make sure we have them here in the exhibit. We can understand that if we shared them with everybody, there really wouldn't be any focus, you know, on the presentation. But right away, what would happen is...
That's the most important part to watch.
We, we agree that it's the most important part. In fact, when it came up, you heard me say, now, what is the big question for everybody? How much is this going to cost me? And as I was standing up here, I saw a whole lot of writing. So to those people, you know, looking at the lines, and I'm the member on the Fallon Select Care Plan, I'm right there, I think everybody knows the type of plan they had, so when they looked at the exhibit, you probably were able to zero beverage quickly in on what it meant to you, the impact.
Okay. Yes, sir, name, please? Excuse me, the superintendent is just informing me that we can, we will be making that stuff available to you, so, Fred, name, please?
Lee Goodspeed, I found that I saw twenty years. I retired in '1. So I have a little more perspectives on the longer picture. I know you can comment first about what I feel is the status of retired teachers' home. My disclaimer, I'm not a lawyer. Everyone needs some substantial advice. My thought is this, we retirees have a contract which the Fallon School Committee District is proposing to breach. The world of business survives because of contract law, and I expect any justice will hold any proven valid contract, meaning Massachusetts, Conover State, and the damages, et cetera. If you breach said contract, I see the lawsuit is inevitable. As it stands now, each retired lawyer has a contract, and each possesses their own voice. That means we each hire a lawyer and bring a suit. I propose all retirees reform the tax intention of corporate corporation, which thus possesses the fiduciary relationship to all, to hire, a lawyer to represent the voice of all of its members, AKA, all retirees who join the payee who seek such action. Three, although I can conceive of numerous reasons why I would otherwise to reinvent the wheel by dropping the GIC services and offering to presently employed teachers, that maybe doesn't, as they have not yet accepted such an offer. If you understand contract law, you will understand that an offer made by a competent entity and accepted by a competent legal entity, with consideration being part of the process, establishes a contract without writing, without signature. When I retired, I went and investigated what my retirement was going to be, and I was told, this, this, and this, and that is GIC, and the GIC has done very well. Now, just because they've given you a bunch of figures and a static at the moment, the GIC, when I started out, that $15,000 policy for life insurance to give you very, they tell you, when I started in '91, it was less than half of $15,000. You have to think in terms of what the GIC has done for the retired community, and has brought us along. There's no guarantee with this, from what I'm given. Static figures mean nothing. You have to think in terms of how many years out. And if inflation, which occurred during the '70s, raises its ugly head again, that it stuck, you'll see some disasters. By the way, Mr. Tim, I'm not being derogatory here, but you said that Spencer's facing an emergency, or capacity. The definitions I bring for urgency and capacity, which I have power to represent, I hope, is bankruptcy. I think what you're talking about is, it's an emergency if you have to face two and a half over. That's not an emergency. Nobody just voted to the last year's conference contract, 13, 14, a 4.9, it's a 5% increase. And you're trying to hold it two and a half, from what I understand. Well, that's neither here nor there, until you bring it to the pound, and say, I mean, you know, back in the '60s, there were some very progressive people in Spencer who decided to build a new high school called David Crowley Beasley.
Excuse me, we're not going to go into further discussion, okay? This is for questions, I've let you go long enough, we're going to move on. Is there anyone else with a question, please? Just a moment.
I'm going to live in, I taught in a high school for 33 years. I got, I have the Unicare Indemnity Plan, I got it a few years now, and it's probably the best one in the farm in this state. No question about it, has to be. And I was wondering, is there any possibility to train that, or to put it all down? We have such a short period of time, last week I got a call from Superintendent Zoffler, and I wanted to get some information, maybe get the plans that Jack had up there to prepare what he thought it was going to come out, or other costs. And my answer was, we're not ready for it yet, we don't have, we're working on it, okay? But the plan itself is a great plan. Now, I want to tell you a little story about, there's a former teacher, Cody, and she's in Rockland, she has Lou Gehrig disease, and you know what a definite disease is, but there's a medication that came out for slower depression. But, you know, there's a medication that can help a slower depression of the disease. She had a fight even with Medicare, but Medicare came across, paid for the prescription. She has a prescription now, and it's, just wondering whether it would be a lot if it were. I'd stay with this plan forever.
Kevin, you want to add something?
The prescription was a thousand dollar a month.
Excuse us one second, please. Uh, folks, uh, we can't have anybody standing. Uh, you gotta come down and fill some seats. Is seats down front? Seats here, I'm sorry. Okay, now, I'm gonna ask, if you're not a retiree, and we run short of seats, and you're here for the school committee meeting, if you give us the courtesy of, of, uh, moving out and getting the seats so that we can, uh, give retirees an opportunity to, we see that we're here for this hearing. Mr. Quinlan, I'm sorry. I'll let you, wait a second, I'm gonna set the hours, so I don't have to look at you. Apologize for the inconvenience, but somebody made a call to the, uh, fire department.
Of course.
Said that they're over capacity, so thank you, whoever that individual was. And, uh, we're gonna move people to the empty seats, so we'll move people out. You gotta find a seat. You gotta come down and find a seat. There's plenty of them down front. Would, would, uh, would one of the ladies, please, go up in the back and see if there are any retirees out there that wanna be part of us here and that don't have a seat, and let her know that we've got seats? Well, we're waiting for that, Mr. Quinlan, I'm sorry for the interruption, if you could take.
So for the medication, she goes into another plan, and she had a fight with a medication at this point. She, and she gonna have to start all over again, and party another plan, and if they don't agree to it, she couldn't have gone forward.
Kevin, could you address that, please?
Thank you, first of all, for sharing the story. It's great, I've been a little longer than I received for a, for a prescription. I cannot speak to the medical policy of, uh, the Medicare plan. Uh, many insurance companies face those situations, and we encounter it on a daily basis, uh, where a person is receiving medication, and if a new insurance company is, is presented, if that medication is not part of that insurance program's covered list, if you will, then that is a possibility. But there are always opportunities for appeal, and that's exactly the process that this woman went through. What the end result will be, I don't know, but you can understand how, Blue Cross and Blue Shield is the largest insurance provider in our country. But they have certain medical policies as well. So that affects a number of people. That's why the appeals process is put in place, so that they can hear stories like this, doctors get involved and so forth. So it is a program that Blue Cross and Blue Shield has in place. Uh, if this prescription is covered, wonderful. If it is not, then the appeals process will go through, and they will rely, I know Blue Cross does this because we deal with this, I know Blue Cross will listen to the providers and, and asking them, well, has this person been prescribed this medication in the past? Can the person receive other prescriptions that can treat the same condition? If not, Blue Cross has policies where they provide a lifetime exception. Again, I can't speak to the fact that, uh, what the outcome will be, but I know that the same process will be in place that many insurance companies have, that appeals processes.
Okay, are there any other questions? Yes, ma'am, name, please.
Sam Smith.
Oh, hi, Sam.
Hi, hi, again. Uh, as Mr. Hayes stipulated, there are a lot of rumors going on out there, so I would appreciate if you would correct what I heard, if it's incorrect. I heard that, uh, if we remain part of GIC, retirees cannot contribute more than fifteen percent, but once we vote ourselves out of GIC, then we're basically at a mercy rate to be raised to twenty-third, four to two, this class, I reckon.
All right, Kevin, could you address that?
That is correct. The GIC, right now, as we mentioned, controls really everything. The carriers that are available to you, the plan options that are available to you, the price, that, the decision.
Excuse me one second, Kevin. Please, uh, keep the conversation down, go up to the wall, this is too important for the people that are asking the questions, they would like to get the answers, thank you. Okay.
So the GIC does maintain full control in the scenario that we have today with the GIC. Coming out of that, it, it, to Spencer East Brookfield, uh, program, if you will, uh, it does provide the district more leverage, more power, if you will, uh, down the line to address cost issues and so forth. Uh, but when we see that the current teachers are looking at the twen, the, the, the current numbers are at twenty-five percent, for example, uh, that's something we, we, in our exhibit, we just use as the benchmark, that twenty-five percent. So to answer your question, yes, uh, coming out of the GIC does provide the district, uh, more control over the, the pricing of products, the plan designs, and so forth.
Mr. Quinlan.
It's a little sad that that wasn't brought up in the first place, because what the rates is all about, so that it can be raised from fifty to twenty-five or thirty, and show them the contract goes through which expires, that the regular teachers will go off to twenty-nine. I wonder if the retirees will have something to go on in a certain plan that the regular teachers do.
That was not, uh, let me just move to your first comment. That was clearly not the intent of us to be here, to drive, if you will, or to change to twenty-five percent. Uh, you heard, heard that, uh, we wanted to make sure, clarify, clarify some of the comments, rumors that were out there, if you will, that plans are being taken away, or that they were gonna be changed dramatically. We were gonna have access to certain programs. That's not the case. I can tell you, when working with the district, it is, it was, or it still is, one of the chief concerns to make sure products are available. Cost is something that every entity, private, public, nonprofit, whatever it might be, it's always an equation, it's always part of the equation.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, David Lumen.
Uh, David who?
Lumen, representing my wife, Beverly, who is a sole deal, retired teacher. Mr. O'Keefe makes a strong point of how controlling the GIC is. It controls cost, it controls plans. But then he kind of pushes it off a little bit and says, well, the district, you know, gets more flexibility. Well, the problem with this is that the GIC, while it controls things, the district also controls them. And not being disparaging, given the current situation, I would be a whole lot more comfortable with the GIC's controlling things.
Yes, sir.
All brain of my wife, uh, retired teacher. We've gotta understand the reluctance.
If I could just for one second, I, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow you to speak, um, but the rules that we've been given from council for this hearing is that only the people who are the actual retiree is allowed to speak, but I've given the flexibility, let other folks do it, and I'll continue to do it. Just try to keep it, uh, but.
Well, the reluctance is that, that we, I hear, that, well, there are a lot of good doctors out there. I hear that, well, after, and I, the figures will be made available to us as far as what the costs are. As far as the, any medication, well, maybe that'll work out if you, if you do appeal right. So it's, it's kind of, it's very difficult to, to make a decision without, uh, the information. The other, the other question, because, oh, I'm gonna go to a finance committee meeting, but she wanted to find out, if you have an estimate of how much the savings for the pound is.
Kevin?
So as far as, when you address the first part of the question about, uh, you know, the information on the prescription, you're not sure how a certain procedure or something will be covered. No insurance company, if you were to ask them, if you were to go to Fallon today and say, how much is it gonna cost for my, for my doctor's office visit? No insurance company will provide you an answer upfront. They always must wait until the claim is actually received by, provided service to, to assign benefits. However, you might be commenting on, you won't go and get the information on the plans themselves, uh, and, and that's certainly, if this moves forward, that will be provided to everybody, but for the sake of the evening's presentation and the time that we have, uh, we could have provided you line-by-line coverage of how much is an X-ray, how much is a doctor's visit, things like that. That is provided in plan information that will be absolutely shared with every individual who wants it. Uh, the, the second part of, of your question, um, as to the savings to the district. At this time, we simply don't know. And the reason, and, and the reason why is because there are a number of options available to you. Until we see final enrollment, we simply don't know what the bottom-line savings or impact will be to the district.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Let me get everybody in your head, it's okay. Mr. Malas.
Yeah, honest question. Do you enjoy individual plans? What are the rates for the family plans for those of us who have spouses that are covered under the plan? You have family plans at present, you don't have all family plans listed. You work, if there are plenty of people that are there?
No, not on the Medicare.
There are no family plans on Medicare. Medicare is always an individual contract. The family plans were shown for those people who are under sixty-five, uh, who don't have access to Medicare or, or who are below the age of sixty-five. And my, my second item is, you're asking us to vote on something without having all the information in one particular issue, uh, maximum out-of-pocket benefit per year. I have no idea what that's going to be for Blue Cross or whatever. I looked online at Fallon just out of curiosity before I came here. GIC maximum out-of-pocket is two hundred dollars a year. Fallon maximum out-of-pocket for Medicare providers is six thousand dollars a year. So there is a big difference in benefits, and so you're asking us to vote on something. We don't know what the benefits are, I hear the word Cadillac, but, I mean, the simple things such as, is there a copay or no copay for doctors? Certainly you have that information. Cadillac, there are also many models of Cadillacs. The Cadillac is not the one model. So until we have that information, I don't see how I can make an informed decision on whether I should go on with this or not, or on a pay rule.
Kevin?
Thank you, I appreciate the comment on the Cadillac, I'll, I'll use that example, uh, going forward. But to your point about out-of-pocket maximums, out-of-pocket maximums are actually part of the federal legislation. So the recent law that has been passed on the national level speaks to out-of-pocket maximums. I'm not sure where the two hundred dollar number came from. I don't know that number, I'm not familiar with that number.
It's from GIC, it's for you.
It could be on certain features of a plan, but there are overall out-of-pocket maximums that's somewhat like an umbrella over all of the services. That's what you might have been looking at with Fallon. Uh, so to say, GIC is two hundred, Fallon is two thousand, uh, depends on the plans that are offered. Uh, there, there are a lot of varieties there. It's not the same maximum for every plan within GIC or outside of GIC.
I don't understand that. How, you're asking us to vote approval on plan, and we don't have any idea of what that is. So certainly we should have been given a, before we vote, a range between this and between that, not ten dollars and twenty-five cents.
All right, thank, thank you, Benny. Uh, is there any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Ten dollars out of time, that's cheap, so. Um, I'm very concerned that you would have a hearing on the twenty-fifth, expecting us to vote without giving us the information, and we all have to go away for first, and since then, any of us.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
I'm just wondering, uh.
I'm sorry, I didn't give name.
Kim Howard.
Okay.
P I C offers a terrible, limited, uh, dental plan. Is it possible to keep a P I C Cadillac plan, or your district's dental plan, with Blue Cross?
All right, Kevin? Did you get that?
If the decision is that, uh, the benefits will come out of the GIC, uh, you will not be able to maintain any of the programs that you have today in the GIC. So your medical plans, um.
No, the dental plan, the GIC is not.
Correct, yes.
Right, so if I brought that into my process, even on district's, you know.
Absolutely, yes.
Is that a plan?
That's a voluntary plan that would be made available to, not now, because you're part of the GIC, but should the decision be to come out of the GIC, you will be made that product with Blue Cross would be made available to you.
Do you know what the cost is on that?
I don't know the cost off the top, why, hey, for the dental plan, but I can tell you, it's been a plan that has seen the same.
Twenty-six dollars?
It's been the same premiums for many, many years.
All right, any other questions? Yes, sir?
Mark Harpertier, my wife is here, I think she's a retiree. Um, actually, two questions. One, as I understand it, perhaps council can advise on this, um, a simple majority vote of the school committee tonight, regardless of what this group, uh, feels, uh, is all that it takes to withdraw from the GIC, is that not correct?
Uh, Kevin?
Yes, you are correct, because the vote by the retirees tonight is advisory only.
So we're hearing symbolism of the vote. Um, my second question echoes a bit of what's been asked here earlier this evening. I, I'd just like to understand from my own education, you're asking retirees for, in essence, at least a symbolic approval to withdraw from the known entity called the GIC that they're all participating in and all have, take part of now, without providing the detail for comparison's sake, uh, for coverage, uh, for, uh, coverage territories, for costs, in essence, before you take your vote. Your vote will be taken. Your vote must be taken if you're going to proceed based on your timeline. What I'm asking for is, can that information be provided for comparison? If or can the vote to withdraw be delayed, so that these retirees can understand what they're jumping off a cliff for and from? Because in essence, we're asking retirees tonight to leave the GIC, that parachute that they currently have for their healthcare, to jump off a cliff, leaving it behind, hoping that the next plan available on the way down the cliff is as good or better.
Thank you. Either Kim or Kevin?
You're right, the, the timeframe is tight with the April first effective date, oh, excuse me, notification date upon us. That is, um, something that is unique to the GIC, to require for three months' notice for a change, when the rest of the market would receive a notice or accept a notice the day before. So the GIC does put us into a little bit of a bind to go through this process, and it's a lengthy process, and this is part of that process. As far as the detailed plan information, upon the vote, upon the decision, you can be certain that we will do our best to get to the information, and that was outlined in, in the, the agenda portion. You can bet that you will receive the information. in the agenda portion. You can bet that you will receive the information right away to help you with the process. And know that it would not be a process where we simply mail you information and you are left trying to understand that information on your own. There would be a lot of handholding through the process where we will have Blue Cross, Fallon, and it's not over a period of one meeting or so. We will make sure that there are many sessions available to you to learn more, to sit down with a representative, to hear all your different options, to find out if your doctors are part of the Fallon direct network, for example, to save you or to reduce that cost exposure. So it will be a very involved process, a very informative process, and you'll have all the information to make the best decision for you. Thank you, your spokesman.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Kadav, I saw your hand up this year. Richard?
Hi, I'm Richard Kadav. I've been retired for approximately 17 years. During that entire time, my current concern is, how much money, as a retired person, am I going to earn? That amount is dependent upon the amount at which I retired, minus my health insurance and life insurance costs. With GIC, I had known what those costs were. Therefore, I was pretty assured of what I was going to earn in any given year. What I've seen tonight, I have no idea what my insurance costs and what my retirement, my medical insurance and my life insurance costs are going to be. And that bothers me. And so that's why it's very difficult for us to make a decision when we have five days left, whatever it is.
Thank you, Rick. We're going to continue with more questions for those people that haven't had an opportunity to ask one. I don't know that we'll get back to a second round, because we have another meeting that was scheduled at seven. We're now closing in on 7:30, but I would like to go, continue and go back to the retirees that still have not had an opportunity to ask a question. Yes, man?
The gentleman from the consulting firm, he brought the nice breakdown of the process. He will take everybody through to decide what claim he or she wants, but that is after the fact, after you have already voted your decision. So that breakdown of the process doesn't mean anything at this point to us, because we have no say. But you, it's after your vote. And I think it's important that people realize it's after your vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that has a question? David?
I think if this was to happen again and be your information, I mean, I'm totally confused right now. So that when that was sent out on February 18th, if a follow-up with some kind of information was sent to us, we wouldn't be sitting here confused about a major issue in our lives.
Thank you, Maureen. Anyone else? Yes, man?
Jan Mariana. I taught 40 years in Spencer East Brookfield. And I think what you're doing is unconscionable. We never knew, when we retired, that all the diligence we had taken out of our paychecks every week would result in this. We all realized that the Spencer East Brookfield School District is in a shambles. That's not our fault. You are picking on the most vulnerable population. We have no vote. Can you imagine being in America right now? We have no vote. How about that? I didn't flip the flag tonight, by the way, because of that. I'm so angry. But we are at our most vulnerable. It's like kicking a puppy.
Thank you.
I'm Jackie Trilling, and I'm a retired kindergarten teacher. And I would like to know, did you ever consider grandfathering in all retirees? And if that was ever, you know, it's a thing of your mind. And perhaps going forward, if you would have offered GIC to those retirees?
Kevin?
Kim, if all the way, maybe feel free. We certainly did consider a lot of different options. Grandfathering certainly part of it, but we had been advised by council that that was not possible for the vast majority of folks.
Why?
I'll let Kim speak to this a little bit more.
It's a little bit of a complicated issue, and it is controlled by the statute that provides for health insurance to public employees. It's a Mass General laws, Chapter 32B. And I would respect any of you who could read it and understand it completely, to be perfectly honest with you. But within that statute, there's a provision that talks about grandfathering. And it's a very good question. Certain people could be grandfathered in at the rate that they are paying now, whatever is the contribution rates. I think if my understanding is correct, some of you may be paying 10%, others are paying 15%, depending on the date of the person's retirement. And the balance of the employees in the district are paying the 75, 25. By law, or Chapter 32B, folks who are covered by an indemnity plan, and I can't remember the numbers, we could ask Kevin first, but those people cannot be grandfathered in. And that's the law. And it's not me who wrote it. It's not the school committee. That's the law. So there could be no grandfathering in for those persons who take an indemnity plan. Those who are not an indemnity plan, there is the possibility of a grandfathering provision. We did talk to the school committee about that, made a recommendation that, to some degree, equalizing the rate that everybody paid seemed to be the fairest way to do it. And I recognize that, I'm sure, many of you here think none of this is fair. So why should we be, you know, required to be that extra percentage? But the rate differential, as Kevin showed you on the rate sheet, was shrinking in terms of the added costs for those folks who were Medicare eligible and who were going into the indemnity plan. So the cost differential to them seemed to be the smallest. So it seemed to be a fair way to administer the changeover.
We're getting close to having to probably take a few more questions, because we still have a lot of time for the vote to be taken and recording the vote, but I'll take a couple more. Yes, man? I'm glad you have a.
It's okay. Retiree, we only have five days before we have to make a decision. My question will be, when we think about it, we're kind of in a flux, and we're thinking maybe we should make a quick decision. If there's a way that we could postpone this, where we don't know what the savings will be for the town, is there a way we could postpone this for a year, give everybody all the information that we need, and maybe we could come up with some actual answers?
Dr. Melas?
The, excuse me, procedure for tonight is obviously to have this public hearing, and then the committee could call for the vote. If they did, obviously, you folks would weigh in on that. And then, once the hearing is brought to a close, the committee then would open their special meeting, of which this issue is one of the agenda items. The committee could act on it this evening based on the hosting of the meeting and the agenda, or they could defer it to a later date. Still looking at that April 1 deadline that's coming up. But with respect to whether the committee can postpone the vote this evening, it would be the call of the committee, that means with their permission. They could do that. The possibility exists, and I can't speak for the feeling of the individual members if they would want to go forward or to postpone it. Proceedually, it could be done.
Someone else said their hand up? Yes, probably got to be close to the last one.
My name is Susan Dupont, a retiree in the very near future. And first of all, I know of a very successful company in Spencer that offers their employees a family plan, and offers them a single plan, and it offers them a person plus one, which would be husband and wife. And I have never heard in this area this vote, because the two people that are paying for insurance have to help out pay for someone who has four, five, or six people. This is the comments that I've been hearing. And I would ask that the committee look into setting up some sort of a tier where a spouse and their husband or wife can have that kind of tier for the insurance instead of having to pay for my husband and I. Why should we pay for someone who has five or six kids?
Kevin, can you address that?
Three-tiered rates are what you're referring to. And yes, that's a possibility that companies look at. I can tell you that we look at that quite a bit for our clients. And you're right, it would help out the person who has the employee's stuff. But behind the scenes, the numbers, if you will, for the people who are families that have three or more, their rates would skyrocket. They would climb even more, because the insurance company is looking to gather so much money to cover the claims of those insured. However you break it up, they still have the same number of people, spouses, children, and so forth, to insure within a group. We allow, if, you know, the decision was to have a two-person rate, well, to the insurance company, they were charging a family rate before. That's lost money, if you will, the whole equation of the money that they need to collect. That lost money is then filed onto all the families that remain in there. So it's a matter of what is fair, what's equitable. And yes, we could present those options, but I can tell you, when we present them, few companies actually go that route because of the severe impact it has on the remaining family plans.
One comment is that this governing body, ours, the school committee, you are going to make a vote. And you are going to vote. Whatever you vote, you've got our future. You have our financial future that we have. They have worked for 30 or 40 years. We are working for 30 or 40 years to retire, to be able to retire and afford to retire. And you gave us a figure of 25%. And from everything I have heard, we are never going to see that 25%. And I, your, our future's in your hands. And there's a huge responsibility for a group that has not shown a lot of responsibility.
Thank you. That's probably going to be the last question, unless somebody's got something that's really... Oh, I'm sorry. I told you I would get back to you. Yes?
I just wanted to say that I know a lot of my parents run from the school district. This is a bad choice, my insurance. I'm an adult, my insurance, okay? I'm a single person. I have a 27-year mortgage. And I found out recently that my pension is only a couple thousand dollars over what I would need to qualify for a subsidized electric and maybe a subsidized healthcare. I can't afford a doc. My father's 11 years old. Okay, I'm sure there's no crying about that. But, you know, you talk about our financial situation. I personally am not rich. I live on my pension. My electricity went out. I don't have a state expenses that a couple has, except for maybe food and water. And if you raise this in one bit, I don't know what I'm going to do. I'm going to go home right now, but I can't afford to rent a house, rent an apartment.
Thank you.
This is from the Office of Administration Finance, the executive office of the administration finance. And it was released on March 17th of this year. It talks about the new insurance division approved of a 1% premium increase, a lowest increase in over 10 years. May I object, I guess, okay, that they might have decreases for the next two years after this? That's what their projection is. And then, just quickly, it says, according to Mercer National Survey of Employees' Spots and Health Leaders, GIC rate increases are lowest on their national employer trends, which are predicted to increase 2.1% in 214 and an increase of another 5.2 in 215. So what's going on with that? You might be better if we maintain what we have. And if we maintain what we have, you might find a beneficial, not this year, but the next two years, if it's true what they're saying. Thank you.
Kevin, you have a comment?
I'm well aware of the 1% notice that the GIC put out. That 1% increase, however, was an aggregate increase across all products that GIC offers. When we bring it home here to the individuals in this room, many, a couple of the products actually saw 4% increases. So the 1% was really just an aggregate number, an average for all products. In fact, the products represented here, for the vast majority, are represented a little bit more than a 4% increase. The GIC has, like the private market, the rest of the market, the GIC grapples with insurance costs every year. In almost every single year, you have seen increases to your premiums at different levels. We too experience that in the private market, and we do whatever we can, everything and anything, for our clients to make sure that impact is as low as possible. So we do exactly what the GIC does. The GIC has seen increases year after year. Certainly, we deal with the same, the same issue.
Go ahead, Brian.
Why is it that more cities and towns are joining again GIC as opposed to any other one? They are now representing 430,000 people. And just this past week, including Framingham, East Ridgewater, Middle Florida, are all going GIC. We're going out, and most people are coming in. Thank you.
I think the decision is one individually for the district. Their issues may not be the same as the concerns here. I can say that there have been several districts coming out of the GIC. You are not the only one. There was a town just that just voted on it as well. So there are, we are not the first. So it has been done. It has been done successfully. And, you know, what other districts do, I can't comment on that. I don't know their concerns.
All right, thank you. I'm going to have a last question. Mr. Atol?
Hey, Bart Paul, I'm a retiree. I guess from what you said about the copays, my concern is, can you give us any assurances that the copays are not going to escalate dramatically, that they're going to be relatively stable?
Sure. When you talk about escalate dramatically, I can tell you that the copays that are in place with the Fallon plans, the early retirees, those people not eligible for Medicare, they are almost better. And now, again, you can break it down line by line, doctor's office visits, prescriptions, and things like that. But I can tell you, the intent was to provide a very proper, hence the plan design for those programs. The Medex plan is a very comprehensive program. You know, doctor's office visits, hospitalization, everything like that. So I feel confident in saying that, no, they will not increase dramatically.
All right, thank you, Kevin. We've got one last comment, 30 seconds.
My question, I want to just say, I'm going to communicate. I have just got to the last second, okay? Medicare paid this, it's $2.26. Medicare paid $2.53. I paid nothing. That was my case.
Thank you. At this point, and I know that, I hope it's not the case, but I hope that no one finds, that they haven't had an opportunity to speak, try to give everybody at least one shot at it, and some several. But we have obligations to deal with on the finances. What's the pleasure of the board? Are there any, do you want to continue more time? Or are there any motions or...
Chairman? Mr. Kudry. I make a motion that a vote be taken of retired teachers in attendance to see if they're in favor of transferring out of the GIC to the school.
they're in favor of transferring out of the GIC to the school district's insurance plans effective July first of two thousand and fourteen.
Why?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cludia, and seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Any discussion? If not, Mary.
First, I apologize for being coming in late, but it's obvious that these retirees in attendance do have further questions. And for them to vote on something that they feel they did not get enough information on, I feel we are not doing our job to them. We need to provide them the information that they're looking for before they can take a vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no other comments, then we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Nodquist?
Aye.
And Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Mr. Gershman?
No.
Mr. Cludia?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So at this point, we'll ask the counters to come forward. And what we would ask the retirees to do when the counters are ready, you can give them cards as you come in, and we'll start with, let me go tell them that you're ready. We'll start with all those that are in support of leaving the GIC, to raise your card, we'll take that. You're going to stand and give your card if you're in favor of leaving the GIC. If you're not able to get up for medical reasons, you can stay seated and raise your card and count you. Okay, so we'll do the ones that are in favor first, and then we'll take a vote on those that are against.
Mr. Chairman, in favor of what now? I just heard two different feelings. In favor of leaving or in favor of staying in GIC?
If you're in favor of leaving the GIC, please stand now and raise your card. That makes it very easy for a count. And now, if you're not in favor of leaving the GIC, please stand and raise your card. We have to have a count.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Linda.
Yes. Was there an executive session that just happened that we were unaware of?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
And my other question is, I don't know why you're questioning this tonight. This is too important.
The hearing session is over, Mrs. Labierre. We've had the vote taken. I'm going to announce the vote at this point. The vote was ninety-two and zero in favor. Okay, so the retirees have made it clear on their position. Is there any motions before the board at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we refer this to our school committee meeting under discussion, which immediately follows this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion in regards? If not, on a roll call vote, Mr. Nodquist?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Ms. Gershman?
No.
Mr. Cludia?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Motion made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Discussion on a roll call vote, Mr. Nodquist?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
Aye.
Ms. Gershman?
Aye.
Mr. Cludia?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. At this point, we'll take, yeah, we'll take about a ten-minute recess, and then we'll be coming back to the school committee meeting. In respect to the chief's requirements, I'm going to move this issue for discussion for the board up to the first item on the agenda, so that it won't delay any longer folks having to wait. So for the benefit of the board, we'll skip over the first items on the agenda, and we'll go down to item number three, review and discussion of approval of possible placement of teacher retirees from the GIC insurance into the district health plan. Comments, discussion from board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludia.
I'm prepared to make a motion, but before I do that, I want to explain to the retirees face to face, for what it's worth, how I came to my decision on this. And I want to make sure it's clear, because although I know Mr. O'Keefe did an excellent job making the presentation, I'm not sure that everybody picked up on it. There are approximately seventy retirees of this district, in our district right now, who are on district insurance plans, and they're paying twenty-five percent of their retirement, of the premium, excuse me. Where is the equity in having seventy employees that worked for this district paying twenty-five percent, and teachers who worked for this district just as hard, just as, did just as good a job, paying ten and fifteen percent? Somebody said we're trying to balance the budget on the backs of the retirees. That's not the truth. Nothing could be further from the truth. This is about equity across the district. If anybody's heard me speak since last May, when I got on this board, that's what I've been trying to find and pound into everybody's head, is equity across the district, not just on this issue, but on a whole host of issues. Change is difficult, I understand that. We asked our consultants, the consultants that have been with this district long before I came here, to bring forth plans to take the retirees out of the GIC that were comparable or better plans. They've told us they've done that. They've told us they've accomplished that. We've offered the top-quality plans in the private sector that are available. And rather than have the discrimination between folks paying ten percent, fifteen percent, and twenty-five percent, I'm comfortable raising it to twenty-five percent contribution. That's my rationale, and it's just one person's opinion. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion to transfer the retired teachers from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Government Insurance Commission Health Insurance Plans to the school district's health insurance plans effective July first of two thousand and fourteen.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Discussion. Any comments from members in regards to the motion and the second? Just to add to what Mr. Cludia says, this is a very painful decision for me as well. I see so many folks here that I consider friends and people that I've known for years. But we are in a very, very difficult situation, and we are charged with trying to provide the best education possible that we can for our kids, and we're getting our legs cut out from underneath us at every turn. And this has been stalled for a long time, and unfortunately, I think we're at the point that I don't want to have to come back here, if I'm still on this board two years from now, and say to those people that I see here tonight that I've known for so long, we can't give you insurance coverage anymore. We don't have it. And we've been, we're being overseen by the state, we've got state overseers here, we're having a host of problems brought to our attention. I've only been here for eight months, had no idea what I was walking into. You have no idea what Mr. Cludia and myself have walked into. And we do this with a heavy heart, trust me. So if there's no other comments from any of the members, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nodquist?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
No.
Ms. Gershman?
No.
Mr. Cludia?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will keep, the superintendent's office will keep all retirees up to date, the insurance brokers will be putting together information, we'll be forwarding that to all the retirees, and we'll be bringing a complete staff of professionals in that will aid us through the process of doing all the paperwork and doing what we have to do. In light of that, I thank you all for coming. The next, the next item on the agenda is Knox Trail trip request. The bodies responsible for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludia.
There's another procedural motion that we're going to need to take with respect to that. And that motion is to authorize the chairman of the school committee and the superintendent of schools to take such action as may be necessary to carry out the school committee's vote to transfer the retired teachers from the GIC to the school district's health plan effective July one, two thousand and fourteen.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Nodquist. Any discussion on that motion? If not, on a roll call vote, Mr. Nodquist?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Cody?
No.
Ms. Gershman?
No.
Mr. Cludia?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The next item on the agenda is the Knox Trail trip request. Those folks here.
Mr. Chairman, is either Joyce or Jody with us? Oh, I'm sorry, Jody. Jody Barasso, Assistant Principal for Knox Trail, will present the field trip request for the annual trip to New York. Jody, thank you.
For both the New York and the Peer Leader National Honor Society trip. The grade eight New York trip is scheduled for Wednesday, June eleventh. It's an annual trip for all eighth graders who would like to attend. And then the Peer Leader trip is for June sixteenth, or sixth, at High Meadows in Granbury, Connecticut. All students that want to attend can go. We don't hold anyone back due to financial hardship. And I guess it's been going yearly, so we just need your approval.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yep.
Well, I don't have a question. I just have to disclose that my child is in part of the Peer Leader group, so I would like to disclose that before a vote is taken.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All still voted.
Did we, Mr. Chair, did we take a motion to approve the trip?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All still voted. Next item on the agenda, report of possible closing of Lake Street School, Dr. Melby.
At a previous school committee meeting relative to budget development and eventual budget approval, the school committee took action and asked the superintendent and the administration to look at the possibility of closing Lake Street Elementary School. Part of the issue relative to that obviously is what potential cost savings the district might be able to recover from that. And then, most importantly, is what would be the educational impact of it. As everyone knows, this school year that we're currently in, when I arrived in July, the committee had already taken action to close Maple Street Elementary School. There was no real concrete plan to put that into effect, but through the good work of my colleagues at the administrative level, the custodial staff, the assistance of the DPW Department of the Town of Spencer, and others through the sheriff's office, their release program, we did pull it together and we were able to get everything moved where it needed to be, although, as you recall, we were a bit crowded, particularly at Lake Street School opening day. I can remember the look on Principal Zablocki's face the opening day when we still had a good number of our furniture desks, et cetera, in there, but we made it work, and I'm pleased to say that eventually everything found a final resting place, and we were able to continue on in the school year. But any type of consideration of closing of a school comes with obviously great angst because you're potentially putting an educational facility, taking it out of operation, and there's a lot of emotion with that. But we are in hard times, difficult times, not only in this school district, but across the Commonwealth, trying to make ends meet. It's no surprise that we inherited collectively a financial situation beyond anyone's imagination, but I'm also pleased to say that we've been able to turn that around. We have put the train back on the track. We've been able to balance our books and account for all our funds. Not that we have money pouring out of the sky for us, but we've been able to put our financial house in order. The second component of that, putting our place in a house in order, was relative to our curriculum plans. There really hadn't been done, too much work done over the years, but through the assistance of the State Department of Education, we're making inroads on that, and we have things in place that will continue for a good number of years going down the road. But the central point is, can you close another elementary school? So I provided the school committee with information, and on the first piece of that, there is a potential savings of four hundred-plus-thousand dollars by closing out an elementary school. And that's obviously because of moving children out of that school into other potential places throughout the district, changing the need for a variety of supplies and heating and electricity, et cetera, et cetera, organizational standpoint from what we need for administration and support personnel, if we're able to absorb that operation, if you will, in the existing facility. So from a potential of four hundred-plus-thousand dollars of savings, there also is the realistic part of looking at the space that we have throughout the district. And I'm just simply providing an overview of that to the school committee this evening, so if anyone's keeping score, I'll give you what the current arrangement is at the three major schools that would be affected by this, and that's, Lake Street School itself has fifteen classrooms that would have to be moved, and of those fifteen, it also includes free, four of our preschool classes. So a total of fifteen, but four of the classes are identified for our preschool program. East Brookfield currently has eleven classes that they need for their operation on a K through six facility. And Y Village has currently eighteen classes that are either being used or some may become available, but Y Village is arranged on a grade two through five arrangement. For those that are keeping track, the junior high school, Knox Trail, has a grade six, seven, eight arrangement because of the closing of Maple Street School, and the high school remains nine to twelve. So taking those three schools of Lake Street at fifteen, East Brookfield at eleven, Y Village at eighteen, the available rooms that we're projecting for next year would be, East Brookfield would have two classrooms available, Y Village would have eight classrooms available, and Knox Trail would have five classrooms available. What we would hope to do on face value, and this doesn't mean that it's a final product, but on face value, if from Lake Street, from the fifteen classes, including the four preschool, if we pulled the four preschool out and put them into Knox Trail that has five available, we still would have one available classroom. The combined available classes between East Brookfield and Y Village are ten, two at East Brookfield, eight at Y Village. The number that we would need coming out of Lake Street would be eleven classes, so we'd be one shy, one shy. That's at face value. So I'm not in a position this evening to recommend that we can do that because we still have some homework, I believe, that we would have to do to see if there's any way that we can reconfigure. Over and above the basic classroom arrangement, and the given, given the differences in grades that we have, with the addition that we have specialized programs in some of the facilities, we have Head Start programs, we have a collaborative program that takes up space, and we also have a number of support areas between OT, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, et cetera. We also have some additional requirements, given the age level of the students, particularly at Lake Street School, because they are so young. So where I'm at this evening is, not to close the door on the conversation, but I'm not here to recommend that it can be done, given what information I have this evening. The possibility exists, but there's still some more homework that would have to be done. So based on that, I'm recommending to the school committee the following. And I'll read from my prepared statement. Although from a financial perspective, the closing of Lake Street School could result in cost savings, I am not prepared to recommend such a change at this time. I would offer the following actions to be taken and recommend... I would offer the following actions to be taken and recommend going forward if the school committee wishes to pursue this matter. Number one, authorize the administration to review the possibility of various grade reorganizations to accommodate the closing of Lake Street School and the redistribution of elementary students. And what that means is that if you followed what I just said relative to the number of classes that we currently have in those facilities, what we would need going forward, on face value, it doesn't work. But if the committee wishes administration to continue, we can come up with other options to see if it would work by reconfiguring our space and redistributing students. The second recommendation I have is to request the administration to attempt to minimize the impact of any changes on the East Brookfield Elementary students with respect to being assigned to other district schools. If anyone has been following the conversation for the recent past, but certainly it came up round about this time last year, there was some concern of whether students from East Brookfield could be redistributed. The eventual decision by the school committee was not to do that, but they did make some decisions with respect to moving sixth-grade students out of Y Village up to Knox Trail, and then a different grade configuration at Lake Street because of the closing of Maple Street, and then similarly, a grade... a different grade configuration here at Y Village because of the movement of those other children. So the third recommendation that I'm making to the school committee is to consider utilizing space at David Proudy High School as to possible elementary programs being reassigned to the high school. What that simply means is that to take a look at all available space, and I've said it a number of times to my school committee and the public, that necessity is the mother of invention, and when you're in hard times, you have to come up with some creative solutions. Ergo, the high school becomes an option, potentially, for creating programs to move elementary school students up there. Case in point, in my career, I've been involved in many, many school districts where we have had either preschool or early childhood programs and kindergarten programs at the high school level with dedicated space. Probably if we were to sit down and to try to design our ideal school, we may let that go by the wayside, but again, necessity is the mother of invention, and when we're hard pressed, we might have to reopen that and look at it differently. But I can tell you from at least my experience, properly planned, it can work. The fourth recommendation that I make to the school committee is that should they do go forward, that we hold a public hearing in the near future to allow for the public input. Part of my experience, having done a number of reorganizations in districts, we always have gone forward to the public to allow that input, that discourse, yes, the concerns, the complaints, all the options are put out on the table, and then ultimately bring a recommendation forward to the school committee for potential action. And last but not least is number five recommendation, to consult with town officials for municipal input and impact. Throughout the course of my nine months now here in the district, I believe that there has been an open, at least, solicitation of input from the municipal officials on some of the key issues, and this is certainly a key issue that would have potential impact, both for Spencer and for East Brookfield. If anyone has been following the discussion, you know that there's a good deal of concern on the part of the East Brookfield municipal officials, as well as parents, staff, and certainly Mr. Tomlin, who has spoken very eloquently of maintaining the integrity of that elementary school. So I'm recommending that if we are going to go forward, then we probably should open up the conversation. So I bring that to the attention of the school committee for their consideration. I believe the savings are tremendous, and given the difficult financial times that we're involved in, it certainly would help to lessen the impact on both communities as we go forward with the proposed FY15 budget, but we're not there yet based on the potential reconfigurations, and I'm looking for some additional time.
Thank you, Dr. Malvey. Comments or questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cludier?
I brought this request forward, and so I appreciate Dr. Malvey getting back to us. We asked him to get back to us this evening. Dr. Malvey, through the chair to you, at our next meeting, do you feel that you could have a better handle on space for us? If it was even feasible to do this?
I believe so, as long as we're not meeting Wednesday night or Thursday night of this week.
Mr. Chairman, what's our next meeting?
I believe April 8.
April 8?
April 8.
Does that give you sufficient time, Dr.?
I... I'll do my best, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Gives me a little bit of breathing space.
I agree with all your recommendations, and I think it's... they're good recommendations. I certainly would like to move forward on all fronts, including item four, scheduling and holding a public hearing for public input. Nobody likes change in this district. It's been proven time and time again. But planned change can be good change, and I certainly want to make sure that we're not taking and putting a square peg in a round hole. I want to make sure that if we're going to make this change, that we have sufficient space, not just for today, but for next year and moving forward. So with that, I'd make a motion that, at the chair's discretion, we, you know, schedule and hold a public hearing for input on this matter, and that certainly can be in conjunction with one of our meetings.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions? We do have a district policy in regards to the procedures to close the school. Dr. Malvey, can you give us a brief overview?
Well, there are, and I don't have it... I apologize, I don't have it with me this evening, but there are steps that the committee needs to adhere to from a policy standpoint on going forward on this type of endeavor. But more importantly, I want to comment, if I may, Mr. Chairman, on the agreement?
Yes.
Okay. What I've asked permission for is to make a commentary relative to the regional school agreement that originally convened the two towns, East Brookfield and Spencer. There are parts to that agreement that deal with this specifically, if it requires an amendment to the agreement. And the amendment can be initiated by action of the school committee, or it could be initiated by action of the member towns, if you will, eventually to come forward to the school committee. In some respects, the... there's another provision with regard to amending the agreement and/or the withdrawal of any of the towns, that that has a certain process to follow for the initiation of that activity, if anyone were inclined to look at that as a possibility. But I want to be upfront with everyone that if this does move forward, I, as superintendent, will be very attentive to apprising the committee and certainly will be consulting with legal counsel as well, that if they do choose to go that route, that we make sure that we follow the dictates of the agreement. I've had some conversation with municipal officials on both sides, if you will. They're aware of it, they're sensitive to it, and as we go down the road, if there is a real possibility of that, I think that will be foremost on the school committee's mind, to make sure that they adhere to what that regional school agreement is. So I want to put that out there so that people realize that we're aware of it, we'll be attentive to it, we're not trying to put it to the side, and at different occasions, members of the school committee have raised the issue, and I just want folks to know out there that we will certainly look at that very, very closely.
Thank you, Dr. Malvey. Mary, do you have a question?
Well, that did touch on one of my questions. My other question is, on number three, your consideration of elementary school at the David Proudy High School. My concern is NEASC, with the building itself, that was one of their main concerns about the accreditation through NEASC, was the condition of the building. If we're going to move kindergarten or preschool students to a building that is already a concern for high school students, do you think that we will be getting NIAC accreditation for our youngest of students? And if we do not get NIAC accreditations, are we there at the risk of losing grant money? Because it's my understanding, we do have grant money because we are NIAC accredited.
Is that a question or a statement?
I guess it's a question. Are we...
Dr. Malvey?
If I understand it, Mary, is the first part about accreditation in general for the high school, given the condition of the school?
Correct. That was one of NEASC's concerns.
Right, right. I don't think, conceptually, I don't think that that would rule us out from taking a looksee to examine it, but to your point, we would have to be very careful because you just can't take elementary school students and put them in a facility that was designed for high school students, teenagers. But with possible modifications, if we're able to handle that, it could become doable. I don't think that necessarily would impact the high school's standpoint because the programs would stand on their own two feet, if you will. So that's relative to the accreditation of the high school, and what Mrs. Gershman is referring to is the NEASC, New England Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation that accredits high school secondary programs. So I think that's the way we would look at it and be very sensitive to it. The second part she mentioned is NIAC accreditation, and NIAC accreditation is relative to the early programs that we have in our school district, and many school districts do have that. We would have to make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted, so that as we go forward for that accreditation, the way we're currently configured, that we'd be able to have a mirror image of that at the high school. If we couldn't do that, if we were to move those young children up there, if we couldn't do that, then yes, we run the risk of losing the accreditation, and that would weigh heavily on me of the type of recommendation I would make at that time. But we will look at that very, very carefully. I have to rely on my fellow administrators to point me in the right direction with that because everything will be a check, check. If we have it now, check. Can we do it somewhere else on that mirror image? Check. And if we can't, then I'd be reluctant to bring that forward.
Thank you, Dr. Malvey. Mary, do you have any other questions?
That was it. Thank you.
Any questions for any other board members?
Just a question. A comment. Just, Mr. Chairman, was that a motion made by Mr. Cludier?
Yes, it was.
Then I'll second that motion, so have that seconded.
We'll go back in a second and have Mr. Cludier restate the motion. Do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Do any other board members have any questions? Mr. Cludier, would you restate your motion, please?
Certainly. It would be to hold a... convene a public hearing on this matter at one of our future committee meetings.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Cludier to convene a public hearing on this matter at a future school committee meeting, seconded by Mr. Naughtquist. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, so voted. Any other motions or concerns, discussions in regards to this issue? No? Okay. Question? I'm sorry.
Are you going to schedule that tonight?
Um, well, what's your...
I would ask the committee of whether you want to do it before the 8th, before you have really some detailed information, just to broach the concept, or would you rather wait, hear the information, and then have the public hearing of what proposal you may be leaning toward? It's, you know, which way you want to go, whatever the flavor of the committee is. If you still intended to go forward with it, you have time.
Right. I think at this point, the chair would like to have a motion to instruct the superintendent to go forward with further investigation based upon the recommendations that he has made to us with a time certain to respond back to us by that April 8th meeting. Is there such a motion for that?
Mr. Chairman, I make that as a motion.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Naughtquist. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cludier. Any further discussion on it?
Can I repeat that? I'm not sure if they're on that.
Okay. The motion is from the committee to instruct the superintendent to continue with his investigation based upon the recommendations that he has given us, and to be able to report back with a recommendation, yea or nay, on April 8th, and we'll put this to rest at that point, and then we'll go to a public hearing if it's a positive.
Can I just have clarification? Will the public hearing be before the 8th? I'm sorry, I'm confused. Before the 8th or after the 8th? I'm just...
I would say after, but that's the call of the committee.
So there'll be no vote taken on the 8th?
I would say that we hold a public hearing after we find out if it's feasible.
Yeah. Do we want to consider doing it the same night that we get the request, or do you want to set another meeting to...
What about... do we have a second meeting in April?
No.
Scheduled at this time?
Your call, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have any preference?
For the meeting date?
Are you interested in having a public hearing on the same date that you're going to report back to us as to the feasibility of this?
To be quite honest, I'd rather have the committee deliberate on... because it could be a series of proposals. I would prefer that the committee deal with it and then go forward to a public hearing.
Why don't we... we'll plan on scheduling a second school committee meeting for April. I'll check with the members for availability. We'll get a time that everyone can be present at. We all set, Martha, with motion seconds and votes on that? Okay. All right. Next item is FY15 budget review. Dr. Malvey?
I put that item on the agenda to see if there was any further discussion that the committee wanted to hold specifically on the FY15 budget as it currently stands. We have made it public, you've had your public hearing, the committee has adopted it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, in the amount of $24,151,795. And if there's any further need for the committee to comment on it or ask administration to come up with additional information, that's number one. Number two, as part of the FY15 budget, I would ask the committee for further consideration on the capital outlay piece relative to the technology issues that we have identified for the committee. And last evening, we had some conversation with the Spencer Board of Selectment and Finance Committee, that there seemed to be some sensitivity of whether that item, that request, and I believe it's in the amount of $632,000, whether the school committee wants to officially move that forward for consideration at the town meeting. And then I have another piece as a corollary to the FY15 budget relative to technology, but I would like any comment relative to those two issues.
Thank you, Dr. Malvey. This issue was addressed last night. Mr. Cludier and I attended with Dr. Malvey and with Julie, the business manager, with the Spencer Selectmen, and we made them aware of the problem that we're running into with our technology as of early April. And the ticket number is large, as you know, and there is no room in our budget to address it, but we're going to enter into a very serious field where information can be compromised and privacy on some issues may be jeopardized. And we made the selectmen and the town manager aware of that, and I asked them what their feeling was if the committee were to come up with a ballot question for a debt exclusion, which would be a one-time, if approved, temporary increase on the tax rate that would allow us the funds to be able to allow Dr. Malvey to ensure the administration will be able to continue to do what they have to do and that all the information that needs to be remain public and sensitive can remain that way. Otherwise, we're going to have some massive changes and shutdowns of a lot of the equipment that we're currently using. So I bring that up just for discussion from the board, because if you have some idea that you would like to support that, then it's something that we should probably put a dollar figure on tonight and approve with a motion and send to them so that we meet their timeframe requirements, because they're looking, I believe, to be closing on the 8th. So I think it's probably the only opportunity... So I think it's probably the only opportunity that we're going to have to give the district an opportunity to address those technology needs. Does anybody have any comments or thoughts in regards to that?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Naughtquist.
What is the, is the dollar figure on that?
I think Dr. Malby has indicated it's around $632,000, and that would be as a debt exclusion article, and I would say we're probably looking at an impact, perhaps around 50 cents for a year. Anybody agree with that? Mr. Cludier, would you guess would be in that ballpark?
I think it's somewhere in that area. I'm not sure exactly.
But that's something for town fathers to figure and calculate out. I think the issue before us is, we've got a serious problem. Dr. Malby can speak to it to a little bit more in length, if you'd like to, so that everyone clearly understands it, but if we don't at least take the opportunity and go forward, I don't think we have anything to lose. Voters will either say yes or no. Otherwise, I don't know how we address an issue of that larger number, given the constraints that we have financially. But, Dr. Malby, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, it's one of these things that if we, as a district, don't move sooner or later, we're going to grind to a halt on our existing systems. I've said a number of occasions that, given the equipment that we have, the units that we do have throughout the district, elementary up onto high school, we have a tad over 800 units, if you will, but they're all outdated and cannot be further rebuilt, if you will, when they break down. The issue that we are confronted with, as every other school district and anyone else that has computers that operate with the XP system as their operating system, XP technically goes out of business come April eighth. We'll still be able to run our computers, but we won't have the backup, we won't have the support, we won't have the assistance when something goes wrong. And we start to expose ourselves from a security breach, a potential security breach, on data that heretofore we've been able to protect. We have certain legal requirements because of student information, staff information, health information, et cetera, et cetera. The gamut goes on and on and on, that in a flash, when we don't have the backup and the protection through this, and it's a Microsoft issue providing XP throughout the country, that we become exposed very, very quickly. We're going to have to start shutting down our systems and limiting the access from an administrative standpoint and from an instructional standpoint with teachers. We're looking at approximately seven weeks to get to the end of the year to close out this school year from April eighth on. It's going to be virtually impossible for us to secure that environment and put yourself in the shoes of particularly teachers, where we tell them that no longer can they operate certain systems and programs, and a complete shutdown of accessing the internet. They'll have to shift back to the old ways, so to speak, and given where we're at with seven weeks left, that's going to cause some real difficulty for people to shift, and the students, I'm sure, are not going to be too pleased. So what we're asking the school committee is for that support to move the issue forward, because we have no choice in this school district. They're going to run out of their usefulness. We've already run out of patching units that have broken down through the course of the year. I have an alternate plan for the committee to try to do something immediately that I'll bring up after we deal with this issue, but the main piece is that we need to act on this sooner or later. The sooner would be now to move it forward, and we take our chances with the respective towns. If we're not successful there, it doesn't solve our problem, and I will be coming back with further recommendations, because we cannot put this in the bottom drawer and think that it will go away. It's there to stay. Most school districts that I'm familiar with have begun the upgrade process, but they've had a different financial situation that they've been able to address this over the course of the last year and two. Very recently, we had a very productive meeting with a group of professionals in the community through what we call a CVTE Committee, and that stands for Career Vocational Technical Education Committee, and it's made up, I believe, of some accomplished people, COO of FlexCon, the director of Clem's, the technology person, the vice president for technology that handles credit unions throughout the country, and several individual technology companies that are independent. And when we reviewed this situation with them and what their advice would be, the answer, I can't repeat publicly, but the answer was, you folks are in heap big trouble. Because they, on the business end, have already started to move, and then obviously the clients that they have, they've moved those clients to either newer systems or upgrades, giving the units that their, you know, clients had. So they had no recommendations, could we temporarily fix this, could we patch it some way? And if that's coming from the folks that, you know, eat, drink, and sleep this stuff, then we truly are in heap big trouble. So we need to move forward rather quickly. I can apologize that we weren't able, as a school district, to advance this issue earlier. It should have been done, but I certainly can go back to my predecessors, that they didn't have the financial means then, so now's the time to face the issue, and something really needs to be done.
Any, Dr. Malby, in light of that, is this something that, from what you've been told, do we need to try to go forward and address the full amount, the whole problem at once, or is it something that could be done in...
This $632 would take care of, I believe, up to half, a little better than half, of what our issues are. And so it kind of would be a first wave. There could be a second and a third stage, again, as we look at the overall financial picture of the operating budget, and then certainly from the town perspective. But in my meeting today with the technology folks, I think things will change a little bit, because even though we currently have over 800 computers in the district, they believe that they can scale that back somewhat as we go forward with newer systems, if you will, and even some potential upgrades here on a small number of them that I'll bring forward in a few minutes. So I think it would be a very, very good start, and get us down the road, and help us to lessen the impact if we have to have a Phase Two and a Phase Three.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members? If not, is there any motions?
Chairman?
Mr. Naughtquist.
I'd like to make a motion, seeing what Dr. Malby says, to go for a debt exclusion for technology for $632,000, so he can get it on a ballot.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Naughtquist. Is there a second? Second by Mr. King. Any further discussion?
If I may, with the motion's approval, that not only a debt exclusion, but for purposes of procedural, that it'd be put on a capital request to the respective towns? If the committee would accept that through the motion?
Chairman, I did check with the town of Spencer, and they already did their capitals for this year, so it's closed. There's no more capitals this year, so if we're going to go forward, I think this is the only way to go. I don't know about East Brookfield, but I did talk to Spencer. They already made their capital requests, and it's already been appropriated, so I guess the money's been spent as far as the capital goes for the town of Spencer.
It's being suggested, Mr. Naughtquist, it will have no effect on what we're doing, but would you be willing to amend the motion just for procedural matters, that we'll send this as well to the capital request? And at least, should this not get approved by voters, at least they'll have our request to be in line for next year.
Okay, I'll make that as amendment that the capital...
Capital Improvement Committee.
Okay, capital improvement, and then with the debt exclusion question also.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. King. Any further?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Kurt, for that. That's just a procedural thing, that it doesn't, we have a two-pronged approach now, because we heard, I think we heard a little bit different information last evening, but at least we've got both bases covered now. Thank you.
If I may, I think we asked this before, Mr. Fayad, you, Eastbrook doesn't have a capital committee, it's done through the selectmen. Okay, so we would send that to the selectmen.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cludier?
I know we're talking about the $632,000, and we're talking, in hearing Dr. Malby speak, he's saying that solves about half of the problem. I really think we need to get our hands around what the rest of the, the other half of that is, and be able to put a number to it, because I wouldn't want to mislead the voters that this solves the problem, because there will be a round two, because I don't see next year this district having $632,000 to throw at technology, and this is not something that can just wait. So I just think we need to be right out in front of this thing, that really the number of 632 is about half of what we need.
And I think the superintendent's indicated that might even, might even be a bit, tad more than that, that there may be a third round, or close to a third round.
Potentially.
Potential.
I think potentially. I think in reality, we need to get our hands around what that total number is. I will support this motion, but I think we need to really ask the administration to come back at our next meeting with that, a better handle on what the totality of this issue is.
Would the board be comfortable going forward with this number, just so that we can have our spot to be able to have the question on, and in the meantime, direct the superintendent to get a more final number for us overall? Yes. Is that acceptable?
Yes. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That doesn't require a roll call vote, does it?
No.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda is hearing for visitors.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, on the follow-up to that, it's not an agenda item, but it deals with this issue on the technology. Based on my meeting today with the technology folks, and because of the immediacy of this issue, where we're fast approaching April eighth, we have to make sure that we're operable from a financial standpoint and an administrative standpoint, to run the district and to run the schools. And we also want to be able to run some semblance of computer operations for the teachers and for the students. So what the technology folks, my request over the past week, what they brought to me this morning was that as they re-reviewed the units that we have, of the over 800, they have identified a potential 245 computers that might possibly be upgradable if we're to go, if we're able to find the money to go with some new systems. That would be new drives, new memory, et cetera, et cetera. And when we costed that out, it was going to be well over $100,000, of which tonight I don't have, but we scrubbed the numbers today, and through Julie's good work, we went into the technology operating budget, and we believe that we can uncover approximately six, I'm sorry, $56,000, it's 55 and some change, but we believe that we can recover that, because we have frozen just about all expenditures in the district going back to the fall. We've been very conservative on our purchases, and we've also, in the technology arena, have held off on a personnel position, hoping that we could get a little further down into the school year. And here we are, very close to the fourth quarter, April just around the corner, so I'm comfortable that we would be able to access that money with no great risk to our basic technology operations. And in the absence of that, you know, come April nine, 10, 11, and so forth, we may have to shut down. But my point is that I believe we have the availability of that money, and even though we don't have it on the budget this evening, it would require an approval vote for the committee to transfer it, and then I would have to pass it on to the commissioner for approval. But I'm asking the committee that in the absence of any objection to that coming forward at the next meeting as an agenda item, that would give me the possibility to go forward and move on this item, and the committee would just hold their vote in abeyance until the next meeting. So I'm not asking you to vote, I'm just asking you, in the absence of an objection, to do that, in that I'm laying it out of how I would then proceed, it can be a win-win proposition. That is, we have the money, the committee eventually would have to take a vote on it, because I cannot do it unilaterally, and I'm sure the commissioner would go along with it, because it's coming from the technology arena, right from the get-go, and we'd be able to move forward. We're looking at anywhere from a four to 10-day window to get the material that we need to upgrade approximately 245 computers, which is the number of the 245 that could potentially be upgradable. Over and above that, the other units that I would like to see that gets us well over the $100,000 mark, I will look to see if we can do that at a future date, but I am not comfortable this evening asking for the same vote of endorsement, not vote, the same endorsement, if you will, by not objecting. Does that make sense?
Any comments or questions from members in regards to what Dr. Malby just said? Mr. Naughtquist?
I just want to say thanks to Julie on behalf of the board, but myself, you did outstanding jobs when she came here, and finding the money, that's a real plus, so I want to say thank you as a school committee member, and I'm sure for the rest of the board. Thank you, Julie.
Any other, any questions or comments in regards to what Dr. Malby just said?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cludier?
I'd just like to know what account numbers this is coming out of, please.
Julie, can you handle that?
This is a copy of, it's basically the expenditure report line, so currently, exactly, it should be the same as your last expenditure report, but this is currently where we stand.
Julie, would you just hold on a second, please, until everybody gets their copies and start over from the beginning? Everybody all set?
Okay. So the first sheet was the budget transfer that we've been requesting. The second sheet is just what's currently in those accounts, and what we're looking to transfer, and what the balances are, and what we're looking to actually spend, the $40,000 and the $15,000. So those would be what we need to spend to upgrade the 245 computers. And this is basically taking all the money from all of our little lines, $1,500, $1,500, across the board, to get the $55,000. Does anyone have any specific questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cludier?
Through you to the superintendent. Dr. Malby, is it possible that we could utilize some of the $120,000 funds that were put aside in that stabilization account by the Commission of Education for this?
No, not at the current time, but I will also tell you that as we move into the fourth quarter, if we're clear on the horizon for the potential liabilities that were identified for the commissioner, I will be making a move to the commissioner that we can redirect that money elsewhere in the budget, and then it could become available, but right now, it's not.
Okay, and I know you shared this last night at the selectmen's meeting, but I didn't write it down. What's the balance roughly of that account at this point, of that $120,000 contingency account?
I'm going to say upwards of $80,000, thereabouts, Julie, does that sound close?
$82,000.
$82,000, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And I just want to caution that we still have some outstanding liabilities with it that I don't think will drain it down or drain it out, but there's still some payments that will have to be made, but I still think we're within shooting range that we might be able to recover that.
Any other comments or questions in regards to this matter? If not, what's the feeling of the board? We won't take a vote, but do you wish... We won't take a vote, but do you wish to have the superintendent proceed with this?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly support it.
Okay. Anybody in objection to it? Hey, Dr. Malvey, if you would like to proceed, and I will address this at the next meeting.
On behalf of the administration, staff, and students, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Finally, now the next hearing for visitors, last item on the agenda. Anybody? Mrs. McDebit?
I just want to mention, Mr. Cludia, when you said you want a level playing field. I'm 69 years old, I'm 11 years retired. Many people that sat in these seats tonight were my teachers, and they were the best of the best. They taught us well, and many of us went into education, and I feel I did a good job as an educator, because of them. They made a lot less money than I made in that current salaries. And to do a level playing field, some of them weren't even here because they just had surgeries, and some of them that were here were ill. And it can't be a level playing field, and I think we are doing a disservice to those people.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Mr. Fayad?
I just have a couple of questions, or things I'd like to have clarified, that have to do with the discussion about the closing of Lake Street. I did, if you mentioned it, I missed it. Is there a specific timeframe that you're looking at? In other words, are you shooting for this coming September to make this happen?
Dr. Malvey, you want to address that?
I would, my first pass at it, Mr. Fayad, would be to see, conceptually and pragmatically, whether it could be done, and then the next piece would be, could it be done for the beginning of the school year, and if not, then stretch that out to when would be the best time for it. So I've not made up my mind yet, because I don't have the solid information that I'm asking the leave of the committee to do that, and that's what they agreed to this evening. But that's, that's my approach to it.
Well, with all due respect, Dr. Malvey, you mentioned that, you know, you had seen and been involved in a number of reorganizations, and since this came up, I've spent a little time on the Google myself, and there are a lot of good studies out there, where school districts hired consultants to study an issue like this. Not just willy-nilly say, we have the space here, and we have the space there, and we can cram little kids into the high school, and for what? To close a building that you may find, if you do your jobs and you get students coming back to our district, you'll need that space. To go back to someone that I don't quote often, Dr. Hicks, once you close it, it's closed. You will never open that school again. So I would like to recommend that you, and again, I know you have a lot of experience, sir, but these people don't, and they don't know what the ramifications might be down the road from this kind of an action. And I would also like you to, ask you to clarify, in your bullet point recommendations, you mentioned something about the East Brookfield Elementary School, and I didn't quite hear exactly what you said, that, I don't know if you meant that there would be no, no impact on East Brookfield, or whether it was potentially part of the reorganization.
Specifically, what I was referring to, Leo, was, request the administration to attempt to minimize, attempt to minimize, the impact of any changes on the East Brookfield Elementary students with respect to being assigned to other district schools. So I will do my best to minimize that, but in all reality, I will also put it out there of, of an option that would impact the students at East Brookfield Elementary School. But I think where I'm heading with it is that I can lay out a couple of different scenarios to try to minimize it, maybe not even have any impact, but I also, because of where the committee has, in previous discussions, talked about the potential of moving East Brookfield students, particularly Grade Six, as an example, but it could end up, as part of my review, we might take a look at kindergarten. And I'm not saying that's the way we're going to go, but that's the purpose of that statement, so that at least it lets people know that that still is a possibility, but I'm trying to minimize it, and in the end, if it can be done away with, then that can become part of the conversation, too.
And one last thing I'd like to ask through the Chair. What is this committee's interpretation of the regional agreement relative to moving K through Six students from one district to another? And I, and I don't only reference this from an East Brookfield perspective, I'm sure there are parents in Spencer who would like to be sure their kids are going to be close to home when they're that young. So I'd just like to know, for the record, do you believe this is something the school committee can just mandate or dictate, or will it require an amendment to the regional agreement?
Dr. Malvey?
I'm asking the school committee's opinion.
We are going to follow whatever the requirement is of the superintendent. I think he made it clear that we will go through legal counsel, and we'll do what is, whatever is legally proper to be done, and that's what we'll follow, and the agreement will speak for itself.
I have no...
I mean, that's my own...
Haven't read it. Repeat my explanation.
Go ahead.
Unless the committee wants to make a comment, I'd be happy to, to re-clarify the way I see that going, and that's based on the agreement, but committee first.
The way that I interpret the, the regional agreement is to, I mean, I wrote a little note. The first part of the regional agreement, it clearly states, and this is basically a language, I think a language interpretation, it can be interpreted any way. The first part of the agreement, it clearly states, plural, it states students. When you get to Section 14 of the regional agreement, it's where it says a particular pupil will be able to attend a school in another district with the vote of six to seven, six of the seven members. It's the way you want to interpret it. My interpretation of that is, you can't move an entire grade. You can move an individual student, which we have in the past, but I did also hear Dr. Malvey say that he would be looking into the regional agreement, and whether or not it did have to be amended earlier. I don't know if that answers your question, or what my...
Well, if that's the case, and you're going to be asking your counsel for an opinion on that, I'd like to see that be done sooner than later, maybe before your public hearing. And we'll bring our opinion from our counsel at that time, too.
All right. If you want to, Leo, just stay there for a second, but let me take another crack at it. What I was referring to, and what Mary was getting to, so I'll repeat that at the end, but the provisions in the agreement allow the, the, the town meetings to come up with a proposed amendment that then needs to be acted upon. There's another provision that allows the school committee to initiate an amendment to the regional agreement. There's another provision that allows 10% of residents in either town to initiate an amendment, and then back to the piece that Mary was mentioning, there's a section that talks about the school committee having the authority by six of the seven members voting to transfer students, but that, I believe, historically has been interpreted for a student or two, and the practice has been consistent through the years, and we've even done it once or twice in this current school year, but it, I believe, is defined as the movement of, you know, maybe a few students or a handful, not a class, or not an entire grade range. But there is a piece there that talks about six, an affirmative vote of six of the seven members, and that's what you were referring to, Mary.
Correct.
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm not totally against looking at these kind of things, but to do it in a reactionary way, just like you did last year with moving the sixth grade and closing Maple Street, because that school had been talked about being closed for five or six years, and until the boiler blew up, that's when we made a decision to do it.
Okay, thank you.
And I just don't want to see something this big be done on that short a time schedule.
Thank you, Leo. Is there anyone else? Yeah? Just give you a name, please, when you get to the mic.
Hi, Carrie Ferrera. Just a couple of things that you need to also look at into closing Lake Street School and moving the children, is you've got to look at it from a preschooler's perspective, okay? And like, like he said, you moved kids to a different facility that's not meant for them. These kids got to use the bathroom, they got to have lunches, you know, and you got to like incorporate lunches and move everything around, and the cost that it's going to be to renovate a facility to be able to have these younger children come in, you know? That's something you've got to look at, too, because, yeah, you're not going to save $400,000. You're going to have to spend money to move these kids, and that's only part of the thing. People think that they're going to save money, you know, and they're not, because if you close the school, it's going to become the town's problem, and then people are going to end up paying for the school anyways, because they're going to have to pay for upkeep of the school, because it's a building, and it's going to be the town's problem, you know? And then, think about the emotional effect that this would have on the kids, too. All right? Because these preschoolers, they were up at Maple Street School, all right? Now they're at Lake Street School. They're looking for a place to stay for a few years to get a, get a sense of something, all right? Because then, you know, you're going to move them again? I mean, gosh, give the kids a chance to, you know? You know?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, but please, do look into that, how much it's going to cost, because, like I said, there is costs associated with it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, yes?
Hi, I'm Jane Hilda. I'm one of the integrated preschool teachers at Lake Street School, and I understand the whole plight of saving money, but I also wanted to spin off of Ms. Ferrera's comments and say that when I started at Cubs Corner, there was one preschool, then there was two, now there's three, then there was four, now there's four. And it's a great program, and there's a lot of reservation from parents saying that if these kids are going to be at the high school where there were two lockdowns just this school year, how's that going to affect, you know, preschoolers being there? And it's a self-sustaining program, because the special ed students are federally mandated, so the other students are starting to leave, because, you know, they're, they're paying, and they don't want to come somewhere where they're feeling like it's not a priority, or they're not safe. So, just another thought.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Okay, yes. Debbie?
I know I wasn't asked to prepare anything or say anything for tonight, but as I was sitting there, I'm taking down some notes, so I'd just like to say a few things about my thoughts. We do have 15 classrooms at Lake Street School that are utilized. There's four preschool, six kindergarten, and five first grade. Besides that, for those of you who haven't been inside the school, we have the computer room, an art room, the music room, the library. We have a combined multipurpose room, it's the gym, the cafeteria. We have an OT, PT room, an oasis room, which is used as an applied behavioral room, a diapering room, the head start classroom, so there's 15 rooms, stack growing. We have a speech office, a counseling office, a title room, a sped room, a combined speech room, leveled library, the teacher's room, an adaptive phys ed room, a conference room, a head start office, and then the nurse's office, the main office. We don't have one extra bit of space right now. So with that being said, I'm jotting down a few questions of my own. If we were to combine these children, how would all the teachers get their daily prep periods? Contractually, they get five a week. If you have been in the building with these little people, they're three, four, or five year olds, lunch is a big process. Will this be doable when more grades are combined? Will the playground be beneficial to these younger children? Will the facilities be suitable, like Carrie just said, for three, four, or five-year-olds? I was thinking, they were maybe coming to Wyatt Village, and thinking about the toilets, the sinks. If these children are now going to the high school or to Knox Trail, we're going to have to look at all these facilities. If I had a three-year-old, would I want them to be with sixth, seventh, eighth graders? If I had a five-year-old, would I want them to be at the high school? We have a large population of children receiving special ed services. Will we be so crowded that services such as adaptive phys ed, OT, and PT will once again have to utilize the hallway? When I first started at Lake Street, they were doing services in the hallway. We currently have a wonderful room that OT and PT utilize. They have a foam ball pit, they have a relaxation swing. Are all these services that are beneficial to these children going to have to be taken away? I think of it as a parent, 20 years ago, my own child had to receive speech services in the Dudley School system. I would be appalled if he had to receive these services when he was three, four years old, in a room that was so crowded, with other people that are doing speech, OT, PT, because there, there were times, when I first started here, that these services were combined. So as a parent, I think that would, that would, you know, be appalling to me. So these are just a few, my many concerns that I was jotting down, and I am sure that my staff at Lake Street School would welcome all of you to come in to see what they do on a daily basis with the lack of supplies. It looks on paper like we have a large staff, but when you see the issues, that some of these children come with them, these three and four, five-year-olds, we welcome you to come into our school. They make Lake Street School a safe and nurturing place for our children, and I would hope that you do not make a hasty decision regarding our students, because they truly are our future. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to be recognized? Nobody?
No.
She's leaving, yeah. All right, seeing no other hands, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Nodquist, the second.
Second.
By Mr. Cludia. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.